To the work session and call board meeting of the Barre County Board of Education. It's September 29th, 2020, and we will begin by going over the agenda. We welcome everybody who's zooming in or live streaming with us tonight. So Ms. Kraus is on Zoom tonight. Hey Debbie.
Hey, everybody.
You have the invocation next week?
Yes.
Okay. We'll need to approve the minutes and the agenda, of course. I don't think we're going to have any committee reports. And at this time, we don't have any superintendent's recognitions. And have we had any requests of your board something? Okay, very good. All right, superintendent's department reports. Dr. Green, it looks like you're up first.
Yes ma'am. Normally I would say that the communication report is then for your review and all entry questions that you may have. But today I want to pass along a special thank you to the board, personally, and really all of us, for your support of the Remind tool. If that was a tool that we've recently, within the last year, implemented as a communications tool that our teachers can use to communicate both in small groups, but also individually, two-way with parents. And we were over 1.3 million messages sent in the month of August. So it's really a wonderful tool for engaging our families and allowing that two-way communication. It also allows us to communicate via text message, which I think is quite popular these days. And folks in town really enjoy that ability to do that. And so we just wanted to bring that to your attention. Jennifer gets to celebrate the millions when we go over in squads. And so we want to celebrate the millions of communications that we have.
Different, different.
Huh?
Different. He said different.
And we wanted to, I was about to say, have all the celebrations for the millions. We wanted to celebrate the millions of communications through Remind. And thank y'all very much for your support of that.
Yeah, Remind is great. Thank you.
All right, next we have Dr. Matt Thompson with our enrollment report.
And I'll do that for him.
Okay.
He is taking a much deserved day off today. And so the home board is there. We are down about 200 students from this time last year. Not entirely surprising. You'll notice that we're actually up at the high school level. And most of our downward trend is at the middle school level, but that's there. Within 200 students were more this time last year, so it's not a tremendous drop. This is a slight drop compared to here ago. Not checking two weeks ago.
Right. When are we doing our next enrollment?
We do them about every 20 days. So we're about, I don't have the exact date, but we're two weeks in.
Probably 10 days in.
A couple of weeks.
Okay, great.
Dr. Green, do you think it'd be possible to just get some numbers? I'd just be curious to see the numbers that are digital versus in-person. I know that we just had another chance for people to re-sign up for nine weeks. Is that something that you could share with us, or Dr. Thompson?
We can get it.
Yeah, that'd be great. That's fine. Yeah, thank you so much.
When does enrollment for digital going forward another nine weeks end?
It's already.
Has it already ended?
I think on the 25th is the last opportunity for parents to tell us what their change was. And it will begin on the 12th. This one does change on like the tech. Well, I think the 12th may be a day off for students, so I think we'll get it. The 13th is October is the Ashes Day, where the changes will take place.
Okay. I'm just curious as to how many folks are going to continue? And if we had any folks who wanted to switch to it or come back into the classroom?
We can pull that together for you. I don't have that right now, but we certainly can pull that together.
That'd be great. Thank you.
Sorry for putting you on the spot there.
Okay, Ms. Houston.
Okay, good evening. Valentine's Day is in our own person, so it's good to see y'all. The first thing we'll do is our invoices between 10 and 24,099 for the month of September. The first one is whiteboard. It was paid out of the general fund for $20,861.96. And that's the communications tool. I think it is Remind that we pay for, but it's also, there's also a couple other apps that are in there. And that's district-wide, and that's an annual license that we pay for. The next one is DIBCO, and that's paid out of our capital projects funds for $12,052. It is materials for the media center at Bassa. Our next one is inside public sector, paid out of the general fund, $11,599. This is being backup software renewal. Of course, that's district-wide, and that's an annual license also. McMillan Holdings General Fund, $12,739.95 is for 90 AP's psychology textbooks for one of their textbooks. The next one is Williams Electronics for MXN Corp., paid out of capital projects for $17,935. And that's for wireless access points at Bassa. Williams Electronics, paid out of capital projects, $10,400 for 100 webcams, headsets for teaching distant learners. And that's district-wide. Zonell LLC, general fund, $11,675 for Adobe license. And that is district-wide, and that's an annual license we have to pay for. Yellow Folder, general fund, $11,630. And this is a storage app for human resources. It's district-wide and also an annual license. Williams Electronics, paid out of capital projects, $10,400 for an additional 100 webcams and headsets for teaching distant learners. And that's district-wide. Farms and Noble, paid out of capital projects for $13,258. This is the language art books for the classroom, and that was at the Bassa startup. Audio enhancements out of the general fund, $15,628. This is our license for, annual license for our audio enhancement cameras. And this will go up every year as we get more cameras online. Fall at School Solutions, $11,783, destiny district member, library license. And that's district-wide. CEDW Government, paid out of general fund, $18,875. That's VPN remote access security appliances. More of that's got on VPN, security has to be enhanced. And that's district-wide. Dude Solutions, those paid out of the general fund, $14,678. And that's our maintenance work orders this time, so that's once a year, annual license.
Ms. Houston, could I ask a question about that? Have we ever done business with Dude before?
I think this is our third year or second year with it.
This is the second.
Second year with it. And I'm sure you went through the process of looking at different software and found this one to be.
Yes, they just have a very silly name.
I was gonna say, I thought I would have remembered that if we had been, do have business with them before, because it's unusual, to say the least.
The actual title of the module we use is called Asset Essentials, so it doesn't sound quite as crazy as some parent companies do.
Okay, thank you.
You won't forget it.
We were born in the 60s.
Born in the 60s.
Infinite Campus, paid out of the general fund, $14,275. Campus learning module license, that's district-wide. And the final one is Williams Electronics, paid out of capital projects funds, $12,599 for 30 video cards for the audio/video class over at St. Anne's Academy. The next thing I want to look at is on July 28th. This is the ITS temporary spending authority. So on July 28th, the board gave the ITS department $100,000 from which he could waive the normal purchasing policy category. And so we're just recording what he paid for with those. He was able to get Chromebooks, 275 of them, for $72,635. And then he also got more webcams, webcams and headsets for our district teacher, district learning, district teaching. You know what I'm trying to say, right? For distant learners to teach them. And the final is an update on our PPE update.
Ms. Houston, I hate to interrupt, but can we go back to that last item? You're, we've got 6,000 left of that temporary suspension. Are you going to need more funding? Do we need to authorize more funding for that at this point?
John, are you on?
I am on. No ma'am, at this point, I'm not expecting any, anything that we won't have time to go through normal channels of reporting and bringing to you for your approval. I am, in fact, going to be putting out an RFP for some additional webcams and headsets. But we'll be bringing that to you at the next board meeting. So at this point, I don't believe so. If things change, I may come knocking on your door.
Okay, that's fine. I just.
Thank you so much.
Sure.
And thank you, John, for going through, writing purchasing protocols. Our PPE update, not much has changed. We did receive the N95 mask. And I think Dr. Green told us that in the last meeting that we did, we did receive a thousand of those. For the state contribution, not much has changed there, but we've received some clear masks for our speech therapists and our special ed classrooms. So that's right, they're clear, so you can see they're clear and soon. We received disposable face masks, also 7,000 of those. That's a state contribution from FEMA, I believe, and it runs through our PRISA group, and they deliver. Barre Community Foundation still $2,248, and basically make those pretty big masks. And that's about it for us. Updated from last time we talked about these. And that's all I have. Do you have any questions? All right, perfect.
Thank you. All right, next we have Mr. Furrow. I skipped fundraisers on the agenda because you have a list of those, which I presume you reviewed on the, okay.
Good evening. Just a quick update on our Westside Middle School Edition project. Major milestone we reached here in the last 30 days is our building pad on grade. We've begun to pour footings at the site. And we've got some structural steel that has begun to arrive on site as well. And so the next things we'll be looking for is milestones. We'll be getting the concrete slab on grade established. And getting structural steel, beginning to get that in place. So things are coming along quite well.
Joe, this is Ricky Bader. Do you have any trouble getting steel?
We have not. Been fortunate, I guess, in that respect. But only deliveries that we've experienced some issue with here in the recent past, bleachers for the renovation of West Side last summer in the gym, a little bit late on longer to get here. I think windows and doors, experiencing some delays and that's, but as far as speeding that.
Thank you. Next, Dr. Moten for Teaching and Learning.
Thank you. I'd like to call this person to the podium. She's going to share information with us regarding our processes, assessing the instructional level of students. There was a lot of concern about the learning losses that students may have suffered as a result of school closings in the spring. But we do have a plan in place, and so this person is going to talk to us about the role of assessment and how we diagnose where students are to plan and gauge instruction.
Good evening. Thank you so much for allowing me to come in here in person. Like Ms. Houston said, I've been watching you on TV for six months. And to actually see you is a little bit step towards being back to normal. So I did want to share a little bit with you about where we are now, as to where we left when the building was closed back in March. So I know we've talked before.
I'm waiting to.
We have talked before about some of the different forms of assessment that teachers use. So some of this is review, but one major thing that teachers do every day in their classroom is formative assessment, and that is what they use to guide instruction. It can be as simple as asking the class to give me a thumbs up or a thumbs down. Do you understand something? It could be every student has their own personal whiteboard, and they're holding up their answer. So the teacher can gauge where students are. It is not necessarily, most of the time, it is not going the grade book. It is helping a teacher just assess very quickly where students are and where they need to instruct moving forward. So it also helps a student know, it's a measurable metric for a student to know where I am as I'm progressing through this coursework, through whatever the standards of the class. So district-wide, you've heard me talk before about MAP or measures of academic progress. That's the formative assessment that we use district-wide, starting in first grade and going. This year, we actually added some ninth graders, so we've been doing it through eighth grade. We also have used the ninth graders in our data this year, this fall. So again, it's not going the grade book. It helps the teachers know where students are. It's adaptive, so it's not just testing their current standards of their current grade level. It's trying to pinpoint where they are. So we use that district-wide as our formative assessment. But then the next one we want to talk about is a summative assessment, and that's just what it sounds like. It's a summary. So in a teacher's classroom, that could be the unit test. I taught this unit, or I taught this topic, and now I'm going to do a test, or a project, or a presentation, or some way to know what students learned. And that's generally what does go in the grade book. And also, so as you all know, that really word milestones would be the district-wide or statewide summative assessment that we use. It also provides some of that accountability. It's what feeds that CCRPI measure that is published and compares schools and districts. Sometimes it's used in certain grade levels for promotion to the next grade. It determines the impact of course grade for high school because of their final exam. So we have those two different types of assessment. And then, you know, we're working with lots of other districts in Georgia to try to combine those into one, so we're not getting two different assessments. We can get rid of the milestones possibly in the future and just give something more similar to MAP that we give three times a year. So what did this look like in this time of COVID-19? So when our building shut down in March, we were planning to give the spring MAP assessment. We generally do the very beginning of the year, then right at this semester break in December, and then towards the end of the year is when we would assess. Well, we didn't have students in the building at the end of the year. And frankly, there were more important things to worry about. We were worried about, were students safe? And did they have a way to connect with their classroom teacher? And did they have food to eat and all those things? So we did not give the MAP test in the spring. And then on March 30th, the federal government, U.S. Department of Education, gave the state permission to just cancel all summative assessments, all state mandated assessments. So we didn't give milestones in the spring. We didn't give any of those state assessments we would normally get. So there's no CCRPI score for this past school year. There are no test scores. Normally, I would be standing here at this meeting telling you how we performed, no milestones. You don't have anything on milestones. So we're not going to have any of that to present. So as we move into this school year, we were actually very fortunate. The company that we purchased the MAP test from had immediately started working last March of how would, if we don't get students back in the building, how would we assess? And if you think about how our schedule in Georgia and a lot of the southeast works, it is different. So in the northeast, schools were still in session longer. And so in June, there were actually some northeast schools that did give their spring MAP tests because they had that remote option. The company already works that quickly. Now, I will say, the state has told us that is not an option for milestones at this point, that if we're giving milestones, it will have to be in person. So that's just something to keep in mind. We were fortunate to have this remote option, especially when we started the school year with every student being remote. So we did actually give those tests this spring, I'm sorry, this fall. As we started the first weekend in September, so we didn't have very many students in the building. We were doing all of our assessments remotely. As students started coming back in the building, if they hadn't already finished those tests, we gave them in the classroom. As we're looking for this year at state assessments, the state of Georgia Department of Education, Richard Woods, did ask for that same waiver again. We have not heard a formal response. The U.S. Department of Education actually has 90 days to respond, and it was filed mid-July. So we have another couple of weeks before we expect to hear back. We have, however, been told by the Secretary of Education not to expect that, that we will test again. Now, that doesn't necessarily mean the accountability part will be there. There may not still be a CCRPI. It's just the idea that we need to, as Dr. Moten said, determine where our students. They were out of the building for a long time, and we need to assess where they are. So for this year, we're planning, we're moving forward, as if in December, we'll start getting some high school milestones tests. Now, that does come into those students that have chosen to be remote and how we get them in the building because there's not a remote option for testing, or how we're going to make that work. So stay tuned. That's still in the plans. So what did remote testing look like, and why did we choose to go that route? Frankly, we didn't have any information on student academic achievement since last December. It was nine months since we'd had the opportunity to collect anything because we were gearing up for that spring MAP administration. We were gearing up for spring milestones, but that didn't happen. So think about back in the spring, teachers had been with their students for more than six months. They knew those students, so when they were doing that remote learning, they still knew who they had in their classroom and how best to teach them. In the fall, that was very different. Most of our students had new teachers who didn't know them. And that's a lot to ask a teacher to just start teaching. You don't know who you're teaching, or what they know, or what they don't know. So we thought it was important to get some new information on those students to help teachers. It also, we were able to give it using the same devices students were using at home for remote learning, especially if they had our Chromebooks. It was much easier. It was a little trickier if they were using a personal device, and you had to worry about how to teach them, how to cut off pop-up blockers and that kind of thing. But it was an option, and we, the company provided us lots of training and resources, and we were able to move forward. And again, as students came back in the building, some of that moved to in-person. But we have a lot of data that we collected while students were still at home. So what are our next steps? Now, we have finished that testing window. We actually stopped on last Friday, is when we finished. And so teachers are already, the great thing about the MAP assessment is they have some data back within 24 hours, for the most part. And now that we've closed the window, we can see school-wide, class-wide, school-wide, district-wide, what that information looks like, which helps us plan for instruction. What resources do we need? It helps teachers know who's in their class and what they, how they should best teach them moving forward. We'll give it again in December, just like has been our normal plan. So if students, as Ms. Stevens was referring earlier, have decided to stay remote or maybe change to remote, we have the remote option. Those that are in the building, we'll assess when they're in the building. That'll give us information of how much students have grown since they started the school year, and then what we still need to do to move forward and stay on track. And again, we'll do that both remotely and at home. So we appreciate the ability to have the MAP tool. It is a great instructional tool for us as a formative assessment. And I'm happy to answer any questions.
You know I'm gonna have some, right?
MAP testing is great. It really is.
It is great, and I love the fact that teachers get an immediate feedback. We're not waiting until the next year after the other stuff. So has every child in our system currently enrolled had the MAP test done?
They did not. So we test in, there's reading, there's language arts, there's math, and there's science. Some did not get through all four of those, either because they might have had a technology issue, or we did have some where it's really hard for a parent not to help when their child's sitting there struggling. And so sometimes we had to have a teacher, let's stop this test and let's wait and finish it later. So we're gonna do some more in October for those that we haven't finished yet.
Okay, so by the time you retest in December, we can be assured that every child will have been mapped per se. And we will know where they should be, so that we can work toward getting them where they need to be, so that by the end of this year, they will have caught up to where they should be.
That's our goal. And actually, the company introduced a new report, just this testing cycle, that showed what it would take if a student happened to lose some of their learning while they were gone, where we need to go, what our goals need to be before we get them back on track.
Okay. This may be a question that we need to just think about for a while, but I'm sure that Dr. Moten and Dr. Michael have thought about it. Is what happens when, if we have children? I'm especially concerned about our younger children that are not up to speed by the end of this year. Do, are we working on a plan to do summer school, or to do some type of remediation or whatever, so that by the time school starts in August of next year, this board can rest assured that all of these children are going to be where they need to be?
Yes, we're already working with those students through the EIP program, early intervention program. And then at the middle school and high school, they're also getting remedial support, so that hopefully by the end of the year, they're on grade level. If not, then we will have a goal setting through MAP, and we'll have some individual learning plans to support those students.
Okay, great. Thank you very much. That's it for me. Anybody else got any questions?
Yeah, this is Gertrude. This is Gary Huff. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so I'm trying to refresh my memory about the MAP. Is that the process, the program that we went into sort of a consortium with other districts to develop?
Yes, sir. So the MAP growth test already existed, and we started using those three years ago. Three years ago, we did join with some other districts, and we're in the process of going through the federal government innovative assessment application, hoping that we can develop it as, it will also give the information to replace milestones. So we're still in that process.
That was my next question. Has it, has yet not to be approved as a replacement for milestones then?
No, we're still in that process. And unfortunately, not having data from the spring has set back every innovative application because we were thinking we had to give milestones two more years. Well, we missed a year. So we still probably will have to give it two more years. But we're still in that, doing that work right now.
Are we gonna have to do milestones then?
Well, we will. We know at least this year we will.
Okay. So the approval process probably won't be this school year. It may be for next school year.
Correct. We have to, part of the application is we have to show that the data we get from our new assessment, which we're calling GMAP, is comparable to the milestones data. So we have to give them both one year. So that'll be this year, and then we would like to prove to the state by next year. What they told us originally is that we couldn't change mid-year. So if we are not sure by fall next year, we'd have to give milestones again. I think we've proven that we can pivot on a dime. We started last year thinking we would give milestones, and then we didn't. So we're kind of keeping that in our pocket.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
I have a quick question for you. Just on the subject of milestones, if a parent was watching right now and they were thinking, oh my gosh. Yeah, because MAP tests don't go in the grade book, but milestones do for high schoolers specifically. What would you say to a parent who might be sitting here listening to this and be very concerned about the fact that their high schooler may be forced to take a test sooner rather than later, that would affect their actual report card grade? Have we thought about that as a district, as to how we might change our grading to accommodate that issue or that concern?
So I know that the high schools do keep that in mind at all times, of knowing that that technically right now is 20% of a student's grade. So one thing to keep in mind is the state legislature this past year cut those numbers in half. We were giving eight milestones in high school. We're now only giving four. So it is fewer courses, that that becomes a concern. Because, I don't know how much of the news you saw recently, because Richard Woods was very frustrated with the fact that the federal government is not looking to approve our waiver. He's actually trying to lessen that impact and make it about quite 20%.
Okay, great. Thank you.
This is Ricky Bader. Did I say 0.01% maybe?
Exactly. That's what he's proposing. It will have to go before the state.
I guess my question is for the MAP testing. I guess y'all see some concerns about the accuracy of it, taking this fall. If you've got some, somebody helping a student, will that play itself out?
Yes. So part of what we, the, I'm sorry, the company put into place, the way they wanted a teacher to administer the assessment, was almost like in a Zoom meeting. Now, we don't use Zoom with students. We use Google Meet or another tool. So the teacher was watching what was happening while the student had the test pulled up. So the student wasn't seeing all those little grin faces, but the teacher was. And it's really easy to tell when they, maybe some parents were just right there in the picture, and some you could see the student cutting their eyes. picture and some you could see the student cutting their eyes. So it's really hard to watch your child struggle. And the point of a MAP test is it adapts, so you're expected to miss about half the questions because it's trying to determine, do you know this, do you not know this? And so I know that was really hard for some parents. So some of them stopped tests or some of them made a note of this might not quite be the most accurate, but as we tested, get into the student level, we're still.
Any other, can't blame the kids. Any other questions? Thank you, Ms. Persinger. All right.
Thank you.
Anything else, Dr. Moten?
That's all.
That was it? Okay, great. Ms. Beggs, do you have anything for us at this time or?
Not at this time.
Okay, great, thank you. All right, at this time, we'll move on to new business. We don't have any old business, so we'll just skip to the new. We have some items that need approval here, so we'll start with number one, the Title One Chromebook RFP. The superintendent recommends authorizing the purchase of Chromebooks from low-bid respondent AITA Technologies in the amount of $290.07 per unit for model 1A765UT and $218.13 per unit for model 1A762UT for a maximum total purchase of $164,641 from Title One Funds and additionally authorizing the use of this response through 12/31/2020 for additional purchases subject to normal board policies for approval and reporting. Does anybody have any questions of Mr. St. Clair about that? Is everybody okay with putting that on the consent agenda?
Yes.
John?
Yes, sir.
If we've done business with this group before?
We have not. So I looked them up on the Better Business Bureau. They have an A-plus rating with the Better Business Bureau. They, they've been in the industry for a while, but this is a first for us.
You feel comfortable?
I do, because what happens with these kind of purchases is they're just the middleman. The product is drop shipped from the manufacturer and we're very happy with our HP products. If we have any issues, we'll, you know, attempt to go through the vendor, but HP has demonstrated time and again that if we have any issues, we can't get resolved. We have contacts directly with HP who will help us. So yes, sir.
Thank you.
The second item is ClearTouch Interactive Panel RFP. The superintendent recommends awarding the purchase of ClearTouch Interactive Panels for the remainder of the 2020-2021 fiscal year to low-bid respondent TechOptics of Winder Jordan in the amount of $3,909.93 per unit with a maximum combined total authorization of $977,482.50 for the fiscal year. That's 250 units. Does anybody have any questions of Mr. St. Clair about that? John, I have a question for you about this purchase. Are these, where are these units gonna go?
We do a refresh cycle every year, so I don't know specifically yet where they go. We, we do our inventory every year of all the technology in all the schools and we identify the worst of what's out there, you know, projectors that are five-plus years old or Promethium boards that are end of life and we target those for replacement. And we're attempting to be on a five-year refresh cycle with fifth finances being what they are and the cost of these, we may be on a seven-year refresh cycle, but we hit the ones at the greatest need first.
Okay, so basically, these are going all over the system mostly as replacements, not really, or possibly.
None of these are, no, these will all be replacing older interactive technology in classrooms and it will be district-wide.
Okay, with a lifespan of somewhere between five and seven years, is that what we're saying?
We expect these actually to last about 10 years. Now, we've only had them for about three, so that's a little bit of speculation, but all indications are that, that these are going to be with us for quite a while. The projectors they're replacing have a five-year lifecycle, so we are still replacing an older technology with a newer technology.
Okay, right. Anybody have any other questions about this?
John, this is Ricky again. This really doesn't have anything to do with the bill. What do you do with the old equipment?
If it has any value, you know, we'll hold on to it. For instance, if we have a classroom where we weren't able to replace a projector, but there's dies, we don't have new technology for them, then we'll take existing functional technology and keep them going. We might cannibalize, you know, several pieces, put them together and make one good unit. But most of what we're pulling out is just really not viable anymore and it goes into, into surplus and is eventually disposed of.
I do.
Is everybody okay with putting this on the consent agenda for Tuesday?
It's always nice to see that we can stay local with this stuff. I see that a lot. It's always nice to check optics.
Yeah, they do a good job for us.
They do.
Thank you.
Okay, this is on the consent agenda, hearing no objection. Third item, a state capital outlay application fiscal year 22 DOE. The superintendent recommends acceptance and approval of Bear County School Systems fiscal year 22 state capital outlay application and start date for renovation of Auburn Elementary School, Holson Beck Elementary School and Appalachia High School. Anybody have any questions about this? Is this okay on the consent agenda? I'm seeing nodding heads here. Okay, good. That goes on the consent agenda also. Okay. Athletic fields turf care. The superintendent recommends entering into a contract with ACS in an annual base contract amount of $25,236 for the maintenance of varsity competition baseball and softball fields based on the scoring summary attached. Other associated costs are included in this contract and will be formed annually as needed. Does anybody have any questions about this?
Yes, this is Ricky again. Joe, this is a change for us, we're changing companies to do this?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Can you go in without two hundred?
Mr. Bailey. Mr. Bailey, I'm sorry to interrupt you, but I don't think we can hear you with the mask on. Can you take that off when you're asking questions? Thank you.
Sorry about that.
It's okay.
So what went into your, decide to go with this company?
Okay, so the last three years, we've been working with the turf vendor. We haven't had a true RFP, we're not this contract yet. So this year, we did the RFP, we lived out on the street, we had great people that responded. Our vendor was Superior, decision turned out Sugar Hill, and ACS was out of vote. And next up, we got Price, which is on the sheet right here. Built the best deal with ACS and they've been working with us for two and a half years on the turf, on the ground of schools and then carry the grounds and I feel like they're really improved under their care. We're gonna provide us with separate crews and managers for athletic turf fields and pretty much all the schools. And I was not confident I would not be changing it. Company's working, Washington's building a child.
Okay, thank you.
The company, how long has the company that's been doing it been doing it?
It's been doing it now on our best golf field for three years.
Okay. What, have you guys talked to the coaches? Are they, how do they feel about? I know, I ask these questions because the, they're in better shape, I feel like, now than they've ever been. And I, I kinda hate to, you know, risk going backwards, the money is not that much of a difference.
This is a one-year contract, it's one year, we'll grow up to four years. And if they are not performing, they're not due to expectations that we have, that coaches have, that all of us have, we can change. I agree that they really improved over the last two or three years and we do not want that stop. But.
So is the only reason really you're recommending change is because of the money?
Yes.
Okay, I would like, if you don't mind, to do a little more research on this and not put it on the consent agenda, just to ask a couple of questions if you don't mind.
Okay. All right, Steve. Thank you. Thank you. The fifth item is 21st Century Community Learning Grant Award for 2021. The superintendent recommends approval of the 21st Century Community Learning Center Award for 2020-2021. Does anybody have any questions about this? Dr. Green already, in case we do. Ken, since you stood up to tell us about this and you obviously are prepared, just can you tell us what this grant is?
Well, yes, this is the grant that we, we've gotten this for several years now. And this, we are the fiscal agent for the Boys and Girls Club and they actually implement the grant for us. And so this is a extension of that grant for the next year. I think it's in the same amount and with the same number of kids to be served as it was for last year. So the Georgia State Board of Education awarded the grant and we have to officially vote to receive it.
It's pretty good and rad. I think it's $350,000 a year, if I'm not mistaken.
Two ninety-three.
Dr. Huff, did you say something? I'm sorry.
I just thought it said 293,000.
It may be, it may be.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Okay. So is this okay to put on the consent agenda with everybody?
Yes.
Okay. Item number six is the Bus Air Conditioning and Lift Service for Fiscal Year 2021. Superintendent recommends approval of the, of the both vendors for bus air conditioning and lift services as an extension of the previously approved bus outsourced vendor bid fiscal year 2021, which was approved on 6/2 of 2020. I believe this is for the, well, there you are. You can tell us all about it. I'll just be quiet and you follow.
Yeah, this is just, you know, we've had vendors and stuff to keep our bus repair going. This is a very specialized service. It's kind of keeping us, we're preserving our core mission of keeping buses serviced and inspected. This is so specialized because of air conditioning and our bus is for our special needs children.
Okay. Does anybody have any questions? Consent agenda?
Yes, ma'am.
You got off light tonight. All right, next item on the agenda, Policy Revision JAA Equal Educational Opportunities. Superintendent recommends placing the proposed policy revision JAA Equal Educational Opportunities on the table for public review until the next regularly scheduled Board of Education meeting. Dr. Green, you wanna talk about that?
I might need to speak to this one. The next four actually are all cousins of one another and they all spring from the same Title IX is a federal law that prevents, that prohibits sexual harassment and it applies to both students and employees. And the four policies that are listed here need to be revised because in May 2020, the federal government issued new regulations related to Title IX and these four policies all relate to grievances that folks may have. And so JAA and GAA, which is item seven, GAA, eight, seven and nine on your agenda are basically mirrors of one another. I'm gonna call them twin policies. JAA applies to students, GAA applies to status. But they basically say exactly the same thing. And there are grievance process for folks that feel like they've been mistreated within the school system and how to go about having those grievances resolved. Well, when the Title IX regulations were passed, then for folks that have grievances related to sexual harassment, there was a very specific process that was put in place for addressing those grievances. So for JAA and GAA, the policy needed to be revised to pull those particular complaints out of our normal grievance process and move them to the other two policies that we'll talk about. So basically, the only change you're gonna see in replacing our current JAA is to paragraph one B, which basically says if it meets the definition for sexual harassment according to the definition in JCAC, which we'll get to in a second, then you're gonna follow that policy's process. So JA in large part just take, just adds this paragraph there. There was a few little other small cleanup type items is the reason we want to just replace one with a new one. The policy as we're proposing it comes from GSBA as a recommended sample policy and we reviewed that. Mr. Murphy has seen that as well and we felt like that would serve our needs for JAA. And if you ask Cindy, she'll say the same thing for GAA, which is item nine. When you're ready, I'll go on to the next two policies.
Any questions?
So JAA and JA, what about eight? You said JCAC?
We'll get to that in a second. I want to make two extra comments about that. JAA and GAA, which is I think item seven and nine.
But you said JCAC just adds the one B, right?
Right. Basically, in policy JAA, if you look at paragraph one B, it refers that anything that meets the definition of sexual harassment as described in JCAC will follow that process instead. So all the other complaints will still follow JAA, but we had to pull out sexual harassment complaints because there's a very specific process that we have to follow under Title IX and these new regulations. And so we had to pull them out and direct people to go to JCAC or GAEB depending on whether you're a student or an employee for that process.
So now, when I was reading over this last night, so the area in red is the new one?
Yes, ma'am, yes.
So that area in black, because when it was all lined out, I was like, okay.
The area in black is the current policy. We're recommending just rescinding that entire policy and replacing it with the red. And we felt like it was easier to do it that way than just several places, there would be spots of red.
That's what I was thinking, but I wasn't sure enough.
Yes, ma'am.
I'm not wasting a phone call, just ask.
So in reviewing this, it just seems like we're late, what we're basically doing is replacing the policies and adding more layers of appeals or people after review these appeals and that sort of thing.
Yes. JAA basically stays the same and GAA essentially stay the same except removing sexual harassment complaints and putting them in policy JCAC and GAEB. And now that gets a lot more complicated and I'll talk to that when you're ready for me to talk to that. But for JAA and GAA, there's very little change that's there. It's mainly paragraph one B.
Okay, so are we okay with putting policy revision JAA and policy revision GAA, which would be seven and nine on the list of items on the consent agenda?
Ms. Stevens, Dr. Huff, Gary Huff, can I ask that we put all these in one lump group at the end after Ken has presented them? Because they're all tied together and like you said, I think, I don't know, I have questions, but I think one question that I have at the end would probably suffice for all of these policies. So if we could, can we do that?
So we just want to hold off on seven and nine until we go over eight and 10 and then come back and see how.
Can we just put them all together, Ken? Is that appropriate?
It is if that's what we want to do. Sure, we can do that. So at this point, at this point, Dr. Green, can we go over policy revision JCAC and policy revision GAEB, which is known as eight and nine on the agenda?
Yes, ma'am. So JCAC and GAEB are currently mirrors of one another. We anticipate that to be the same, that they'll be, what we're proposing, that they both be rescinded as they are currently written and be replaced with the proposed policy JCAC and policy GAEB. These policies outline the specific criteria, the specific requirements that the new regulations put in place. They're very prescriptive. There's very little opportunity for us to have any decision-making authority in terms of how we process cases of sexual harassment. So JCAC and GAEB follow the regulations very precisely. These were also based on the Georgia School Boards Association sample policies. In fact, we adopted them with, with the exception of putting our name in them, we adopted them as they were presented by the Georgia School Boards Association because like I said, the new regulations provide almost no room to vary in that. There's a couple of places where they do. They give you the choice of choosing between, the standard of evidence that will be used to make a decision between preponderance of evidence and clear and convincing evidence. We've always used preponderance of evidence and that's what would be recommended particularly at a K-12 level and so we would prefer that we stay with that and that's what's in the proposed policy. Another decision is who actually fills certain roles that are required in the new regulations. For instance, it used to be that we had a single Title IX coordinator that managed the whole thing. Now, you have to have a Title IX coordinator, you have to have at least one investigator, you have to have at least one decision-maker and you have to have an appeals decision-maker. So you're required by the new regulations. So you're required by the new regulations to have four different people and those are all spelled out within the new policy. And the, the other thing you do is the policy requires those four people to have training and for that training to be posted on the web. But you do have some flexibility in determining what training you want to provide for those people. Other than that, the new regulations are very prescriptive. And the policy that we're proposing for JCAC and GAEB follow those prescriptive measures very closely and those two policies will still mirror one another. But one's in the employee section and one is in the student section.
Okay. So, Dr. Huff, did you have a question or comment about this?
Ken, Dr. Green, how, when does this go into effect?
Technically, the new regulations went into effect on August the 20th. But because of the current worldwide pandemic, we are, have been preoccupied with some other stuff to get in place. And so now we're working to get everything in place and taken care of as quickly as we can get it in place. But theoretically, or not theoretically, the new regulations themselves went into effect on August the 20th. And so there's a number of things that we have to do to be fully compliant with that. These four policies are a piece of that. We are getting people trained. We are creating training. And we're doing a number of things to make sure that we're fully compliant as quickly as we can be. But August 20th was the date that the new regulations have.
We, have we designated these four employees pretty much as to who the Title IX coordinator and the investigator and all those people are going to be?
We know who they're going to be. I don't know that everybody that's going to fill one of those roles has been notified of that change just yet. So if you would not make me say it right now, I would appreciate it.
I will not. That is your secret. The last thing I had was, I know in the, when Dr. McMichael sent us out an email about this a week or so ago and it was, it was connected to that was a policy update from our sometimes attorneys, Harbin, Hartland, and Hawkins, who represent the GSBA. I guess that's where, that's where we have copied these documents. And by copying them from Harbin, Hartland, and Hawkins, we can rest assured that they've had legal review by our attorneys?
Yes, sir, both of those actually. Harbin, Hartland, and Hawkins is the law firm that created the sample policies that we copied. And Dan Murphy has also seen these. And so they have been reviewed by lawyers in both of those firms.
Very good. Those were my questions. Thank you.
All right, so does anybody else have any questions about these policies? Okay.
This is Ricky again. I would just, it seems to me like we just have no choice in this.
Well, I'll tell you that JCAC and GAEB follow the regulations just piece by piece. And so, I mean, we have to implement the Title IX regulations and adopting these policies are a part of that.
I think that's a good thing. Thank you.
All right, so having, having, any other questions? Okay, at this point, is everybody happy with taking policy revision JAA, JCAC, GAA, and GAEB, otherwise known as policies seven, eight, nine, and 10 on the list on the consent agenda for next week?
Yes.
See, Ms. Kraus is nodding there also. Okay, good. All right, at this point, we are going to have authorization for committees to meet and we will need a Building and Grounds Committee meeting this month. Dr. Huff, I need to talk to you after the meeting for just a second and see what days are good for you to have that meeting.
Okay, that's fine.
Great. At this point, we will go into executive session to discuss or deliberate upon the appointment, employment compensation, hiring, disciplinary action or dismissal, or periodic evaluation or rating of a public officer or employee, or to interview applicants for the position of superintendent. Need to vote for that, Mr. Bailey?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Yeah. Yes, yes.
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 All right, very good. At this point, we will. We will go into executive session. Thank you all for being here.